I'd like to call our October Board meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance is applied in the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God in this whole liberty and justice for all. We'll do a quick roll call here. We have Bob Cooney, Susan Garrett, Danielle Joen, Mark Donovan, myself, Lori Getz, Bill Brennan, and Bill Fitzsimmons, Lieutenant Fitzsimmons. And Tina, I'm sorry, we have Tina Stevens over there as our secretary. Okay, we had an executive session this evening where we discussed personnel issues and potential litigation. And we are going to continue our executive session after our meeting tonight where we will be discussing potential property acquisition. Moving on to our regular business meeting, the consent agenda, acceptance of the minutes of the Board of Supervisors for September 7th, 2022, public hearing number one, the Comcast franchise agreement, acceptance of the minutes of the Board of Supervisors, September 7th, 2022, public hearing number two, Act 167 Stormwater Management Ordinance Model Ordinance, and acceptance of the minutes of the Board of Supervisors, September 7th, 2022, business meeting, and the September 15th, 2022 workshop meeting. All departmental, committee, commission, and council reports as posted and received by the Board of Supervisors for the month of September 2022. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board?
Since I was the president at the 15th, I would have to abstain for that.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would then just do a separate motion for the 15th.
Okay.
And we'll just directly call it out.
No, that's okay. Acceptance of the minutes of the Board of Supervisors for September 7th, 2022.
Just the 15th workshop.
I'm sorry. Acceptance of the minutes of the Board of Supervisors for the September 15th, 2022 workshop. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, except for Danielle.
Yep.
Okay. Treasurer's report for the period ending September 30th, 2022, consideration of acceptance of the treasurer's report and the approval to pay the bills. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Lori?
Yes. For the period ending September 30th, we had a general fund balance of $5,668,088. We are up about $600,000 over last month, and at this point in the year, we are at about 60% of our expenses and 90% of our revenues. And all of the bills have been reviewed and are recommended for payment.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Two-minute reports, board liaisons. Bob, do you have anything?
Oh, it's good.
Susan, do you have anything?
I do not.
Danielle, do you have anything?
I do not.
Mark, do you have anything?
Planning Commission actually met this month for the first time since January, and we had a Wawa application with a sketch review, and there were numerous comments, and if you want to hear all of them, I have lots of notes. But no, they're planning to put in a 6,049 square foot front-back store, so front and back entrance on the corner, northwest corner of White Horse and 23.
Where Exxon is currently.
Where the Exxon is currently. They would have five fuel pumps with 10 fuel positions down from the current 12 positions on that lot, and stormwater management would be part of the plan. It's currently not, just nothing to speak of anyway. They'd have LED lighting, some 50 spaces for cars to park.
How many pumps did you sell?
Five fuel pumps with 10 positions.
Which is less than what they have.
They currently have six pumps with 12 positions. I think they're just back-to-back or something.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Historical Commission. Well, I think the first thing I wanted to mention is the mural that we have hanging right over here. Not hanging, it's right over here, standing right over here. Sandy Moemeyer, she was the former chair of our Historical Commission. She had purchased this mural at an auction, and I forget when. It was pre-COVID. It was a while ago. This mural was hanging at the Bull Tavern Restaurant. What was the name of that restaurant? Who remembers? I'm sorry.
La Taverna?
La Taverna, yes. It was hanging in the La Taverna Restaurant. And Sandy Moemeyer has donated it to the township. So it now belongs to us, and that's why it is hanging here, or standing here at our facility. So it will be restored and framed, and we're just trying to figure out where we're going to hang it. But it does belong to us at the moment. And Meadow Brook Barn, Declan Mannion had come before the Historical Commission. He kind of did this out of order technically. What's supposed to happen is he should have applied for a permit, given it to Kim. Kim would have said, hey, you have to go to the Historical Commission after all the review and all that kind of stuff. But Declan wanted to go to the Historical Commission first because this is going to change the look of the outside of the building, and he just wanted to make sure that the Historical Commission was okay with the concept of what he was going to do. There is one wall on the barn that is in danger of collapsing, and he's going to be putting these buttresses on the exterior of this wall to stabilize it. And again, it's going to change the look of the outside. The Historical Commission had said that it's common practice, and they were okay with it. So now he's going to go through the whole other process. But I just wanted to let you guys be aware of that.
Where is it located?
The Meadow Brook Barn. This is the property that is on the Meadow Brook Golf Club, right next to the new elementary school.
Okay.
Okay. So last Friday evening, we had a tree lighting ceremony. I think everybody may have passed it on their way here, nice purple lights on it. The Domestic Violence Center of Chester County had sponsored an event here. It was well-attended, I think fairly well-attended. It was a very emotional service. There were some family members of someone that we lost to domestic violence that were here, and it was very emotional. But it was very nice, and it was a really good ceremony, and I just wanted to let everyone know that the purple lights here are for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, which is October. So the last thing on my two-minute report, this is a really long two-minute report. I'm really sorry. The penalty period for our real estate taxes, we are currently in our penalty period for real estate taxes here in Schuylkill Township. We are, believe it or not, almost at 97% collection, which is actually really good. We're much lower than that in past years, so I'm actually really impressed by that with Aaron and his collection. So if you haven't paid your real estate taxes, if you don't do it by the end of the year, there will be a lien put on your house, and there's all kinds of problems, and you just don't want that to happen. So please, pay your real estate taxes by the end of the year if you haven't done so. Aaron Kern's contact information is up on our website.
Should ask him if any of that has to do with the new online payments that he implemented this year.
Oh, yeah, that's a really good question. Yeah, we should ask him that. Yeah, okay. All right. So Lori, do you have a two-minute report?
I do. Okay, so Paul Lehman, just an update on the Paul Lehman Drive Project. The contractor is all up to date on providing all of their submittals to us. We are just in a, still in a scheduling, holding pattern here. They made one slight change to some of the plans that they're working on with the gabion baskets. They're having a hard time procuring certain things, so we had to pivot a little bit on one thing. The engineer approved it. Right now, they're just working on scheduling with the tree removal contractor. As part of the project, we do have to take down some trees. And they are expecting now, I know last month I said they were looking at mid-October. We're now looking at early November. But they are fully aware that they need to do all of the notifications themselves, which includes us, the road department, the police department. They need to notify the engineer specifically. They need to notify the school district of any road closures. And all residents that are affected will be provided 72 hours advanced notice of start of work. And we'll, of course, also post it on our website and put it on social media as soon as we get a start date.
Are they going to inform the residents, or are we?
Yes, no, that is their responsibility. Yes, it's their responsibility.
Okay.
So that's where we are with Paul Lehman, so I'll continue to keep you posted on that. Last week, we had our first post-COVID in-person DEP inspection for our MS4 permit, and we did great. So TNM was a huge help in that. Monica, who handles our MS4 permit for us through the engineer's office, did fabulously. So that was great. We had no findings, so we're good, and it was a very long, it was a very long day.
Could you give just like a really high-level, you know, view of what that looks like, what that inspection process looks like?
To be honest, it's a lot of-
Is it possible to get a Cliff Notes version?
It's a lot of sitting and going through a several hundred-page report that we submit every year, so it's a lot of questions. And what have you done for, you know, checking all of the boxes of the MS4 permit report that we're required to file every year. And then we walked and did an inspection down at the road department garage. So they looked to make sure that we're not polluting the waterway, and talked a lot about, you know, where the drains go to and how often we clean out our oil tanks and that kind of thing.
Okay.
Would it help to get a copy of the report?
No, I was just curious what the process would be.
Yeah, yeah. And then the last thing, and this is some not-so-great news. I've been keeping you guys posted on the FEMA reimbursement that we've been working on. We have spent hours and hours and hours putting-
This is from Ida?
From Ida, yeah. So we've spent a ton of time putting together this request for reimbursement through FEMA. It's not looking so great. I just got a response from them earlier this week, and they have found almost all of our claims ineligible because they're claiming lack of maintenance on the roads, which we are disputing. So there's an appeal process. We're not there yet, but this is going to be a long road, and they don't want to pay us any money. So that's where we are with that, unfortunately.
How much money did we submit?
About $400,000.
Yeah, that's what I thought it was.
Is there something specifically they said we should have been doing to maintain our roads?
No, they, we had a very, we had a very long circular conversation about how they were looking for us to have photos of our roads pre-hurricane so that we could demonstrate what they looked like post-hurricane.
Do we need that? Because I wonder if residents would have those.
Google Earth.
Google, Google Maps.
They're using, they're using Google Earth to deny us, actually. So it's just a-
Do you think this is a typical move?
Yes.
Just strategy to go far left, make us fight for the middle?
Yeah.
Which is really strange, because the ice storm that we had in 2014, Nick, Madeline, and I, because Mary was out sick, we filled a form out, and I think Chief Federman helped us out with that, too. We just filled a form out, handed it in, and then three or four years later, we got a check. How bizarre!
I don't know, because this has been a, I've been working on this since I started here, and it is a little bit difficult because the hurricane happened, none of the people except for Nick that responded to it are here anymore. So it is a little bit of a challenge in that way, but this has been a grueling process. This FEMA rep came out here. I spent hours with him over a couple weeks.
That's bizarre. That is just so bizarre.
We're disputing it. We're going back through all of the records and sending more information. They haven't denied us yet, but-
You're just giving us a heads up.
I'm giving you the heads up to maybe we don't hold our breath for that $400,000.
Is this typical of what other townships are experiencing? Montclair, for example?
Yes, yes. There has been chatter. The other townships have been having an excruciating time, too. In fact, the FEMA guy who came to meet with me told me that we were in better shape than the other townships that he works with. So that's why it's so-
Seems like there's a disconnect from whoever's controlling the purse strings and whoever's coming out here.
Correct.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. That's exactly what it sounds like.
Yeah, so that's where we are with that. We're continuing to work on it, but-
Okay.
So, sorry, Debbie Downer.
Thank you for the hard work, and keep it up.
We will continue fighting.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Well, Chief of Police, Lieutenant?
Nothing other than a normal fourteen.
Okay, okay, great. Township Engineer, he's not here.
Nope.
All right. Wow, this is a really long, long agenda.
I know. Sorry.
It's okay. Old business, update on the new township website.
Lori? Okay, so here's where I'm going to bring it back up. We had our kickoff meeting with Civic Plus a couple weeks ago, and then we just had our first design consultation meeting this week. So we're moving along. We're submitting photos. We're picking out all of the templates based on the feedback that you all gave when we had the workshop meeting on the website. And if all goes as planned, which it will, we are looking at potential launch for the new website by the end of January.
Wow, that's great. That's fast.
That's awesome.
What opportunity are we going to, just for example, I was looking for the multimodal study. I think they had done, the township did 17 on the Freedom Trail. I was looking for that, and I couldn't find that anywhere on, surprisingly, I couldn't find it on the website, right? Because it's so challenging to post content.
If you had found it there, I would have been shocked.
But it made me think, oh, that's the kind of thing that should be accessible to our residents, right? You know, that kind of long-range planning material. What additional opportunities are you going to have, are we going to have to provide input on some content that you've, or is that, or is it going to be so easy to amend this website once it's launched that we will be able to do so after the fact?
It will be easier after the fact to update the website. But if you have specific things that you would like to be included on the website, give me that feedback.
Sooner rather than later?
Now, and I'll keep it. We're not there yet on content, but what they're going to do ultimately is migrate our existing content over to the new website. So we had a staff meeting last week, and my goal is to take everything off of there that doesn't need to come to the new website, and then we control what goes on it. So if you have things that you know you want to find on the website, then just let me know, and we'll keep track of that, and we'll use that when we go into the content migration phase in those meetings.
It's a bit challenging as a new board member. I don't even know, I don't know the totality of what we might have. So it's, so I don't know what I don't know that might be helpful, but that was one thing.
But we wouldn't expect you to know what you don't know.
I don't know. So benevolent of you. But that's great, Lori, thank you.
Yeah, so we're excited. It's going, it's going well so far. They're highly organized, and they're, it's really, they're making it very easy for us.
And the new logo is very cool.
Yes. Oh, I should have, I turned my computer off, but I could have displayed it.
It's okay.
Next time.
Next time.
We'll do it next time.
Did you post it on the new website, on the current website?
No, because I would have no earthly idea how to do it.
It just says like, this is the winner of our-
I'll have to post it in the news section because that's the only thing I have control over.
In the news section, in the news section. That's funny. Okay. Are you all done with that?
Yep.
Okay, cool. Consider approving Dohmeyer Contracting Company quote in the amount of $13,500 for roof replacement at the old township building. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Lori?
So this is, this is for the old township building. If you guys might remember, a couple months back, you authorized us to go out to bid for this. Long story short, it ended up, we were able to get quotes. We found out that it was going to be less expensive than we thought, so we don't actually meet the bid threshold. So rather than going that route and having to drag it out even longer, we were having a really hard time finding people that wanted to do it because it's a small, it's a pretty small job. And there was some concern about what level of work was going to be needed. So we changed course to try to speed it up a bit more, and just sought out three quotes, and all three quotes came in under the bid threshold. So we're going to go that route instead.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. New business, discussion on the 2023 Police Department budget. I'll make that, it's just a discussion, I'm sorry.
If you wanted to, if anything comes up during the course of discussion.
Okay, all right. So usually, when we go over our budget, the entire budget, we do it page by page to see if anyone has any questions. The reason why we're doing this this evening is Chief Frye was supposed to be here tonight, but he has a health issue, so he won't be here. And he wasn't going to be able to make it for our budget meeting. So that's why it was scheduled for this evening. How do we want to do this? How do you guys want to, like I said before, we usually do it page by page, but this is only one page. How do you want to handle this?
How would you normally?
We would see if we had any questions on the page, and if we had any questions on the page, we'd bring them up now.
Lieutenant's here. He can answer any of the questions that Chief would have had that we, well, I should say, he could answer any of the questions that Chief would have been able to answer.
I would suggest, too, that typically what I would do is point out anything that's new or different.
Yeah.
Anything new, being newly proposed. So that's what I would point out. And we do have draft copies that are up on the table here, although some of you might have to share, or we can make more copies.
And again, this is just a draft, so.
Yes.
All right, so does anyone have any comments or questions that they want to talk about? About the budget?
I would just note that it's approximately a $62,000 increase from the 2022 budget. The chief has been able to accomplish that with the addition of, his proposed addition of a full-time, additional full-time employee and officer, and by reducing some clerical staff and some part-time officer personnel. Those are two major changes from the prior fiscal year budget.
And that reduction in clerical staff is just, is due to a retirement.
I just noticed you don't plan on purchasing a vehicle this year?
Yes, that's in capital purchases.
Yeah, there's one, there's a single, it's like-
Capital purchases vehicle.
Oh, it's down at the bottom. Okay, it's not on that line item.
It's a single from the bottom.
Okay.
It's going to be a Tesla, right? For the tenants?
They have a lot of money.
Yeah, yeah.
The chief of-
Should we get rid of that line item then? This line, this 410, 29, 10?
Well, we can't pitch it quite yet because it was used.
Okay.
We will eventually, yes. I don't, I don't know why.
Well, they have leases. That's why. So we don't plan on leasing. We're going to outright purchase them. Is that what you recommend?
That's, that would be my recommendation. That's what the chief is asking for.
Okay, okay.
Purchasing of what?
The 410 to 29, 10.
410, 29, 10, the line item. It's a lease. It was a lease as opposed to, it was a lease purchase as opposed to an outright purchase.
And then we're down to here on the second from the bottom.
And then we have a capital purchase, just to outright purchase it. Okay, all right. All right. Any other questions?
Does the public-
Does the public have any questions? Or comments? Okay, I move that we add this page to our budget discussions for next week.
Do we need to move that?
Do we need to move to do that?
Nope.
Okay.
It will be included in the full budget next week, anyway.
All righty. Well, that was easy, Lieutenant, huh? All right.
I can get rid of my ruler.
I know, right? Number two, accept the resignation of Sam Morris from the Open Space Commission effective August 31st, 2022. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just a side note here, the Open Space Commission will be recruiting someone to take his place. Number three, authorization to advertise the Act 167 Stormwater Management Model Ordinance for adoption at the November 2nd, 2022 business meeting. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Lori, do you have any comments?
So the board authorized advertisement to adopt this ordinance at the last meeting, to adopt it at this meeting. The ordinance is huge, and we're still working through it, and we just needed a little more time to sort out some of the legalities. We want to make sure it's right before it gets adopted. So we didn't advertise it, so we're not paying twice. We held off on advertisement last time until we felt confident in the draft, which we never did. So that's why it's back on the agenda for you to authorize advertisement for adoption at the next meeting.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number four, authorize the township manager to deposit the 2022 state aid into the Schuylkill Township Non-Uniform Pension Plan and the Police Pension Plan in the amounts of $42,472.47 and $112,941.08. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Lori, would you care to comment?
I would. So this is just the state aid that we get for the pension plans. It came in over what our MMO was planned for at the beginning of the year, so that's why I put it on the agenda, because the amounts being deposited are actually more than we planned on. So we're not making any general fund contributions.
Yay, that's actually really, really good news. That's fantastic. Any comments or questions from the board? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consider approving the McDonald Uniform Quote in the amount of $6,414.54 for the Police Department uniforms. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Lieutenant, do you care to comment?
I can comment if you want.
Okay, Lori?
It's class A dress uniforms that the department had never had in the past, and we had the money in the current budget to buy it. The chief and I looked at different options, and he decided what he wanted, and we got measured for him. So we're ready to go if you want.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consider approving Jamakans-
Germicans.
Germican-style estimate in the amount of $3,745 for tree debris removal on Clothe Year Springs Road. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any public comment or questions? All those in favor? Aye. Consider approving Guide Mark Inc. Quote in the amount of $5,600 for crosswalk restriping at Route 23 and White Horse Road and at Route 29 and Pot House Road. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board?
Is that typical to have price that high for restriping?
Yes.
Yes.
Is it, is it just the, is it just the structure, or is there any sort of like reflectors?
Yes, and the dash lines. We're required to do it by PennDOT, so we have to maintain it. And these in particular are completely faded. So, yeah, it's the crosswalks, it's the hashes, and there are four at each intersection that Nick has included in the quote, and that's the price that we budget for every year.
No, that's fine. These are just really busy intersections, so we want to make sure we're doing whatever is appropriate for public safety.
Yeah, absolutely. And eventually, if we don't have them there, PennDOT could slap us on the hand.
Okay, no, we should definitely do it. I'm just wondering if there's anything additional we're doing to-
Are they co-stars?
I'd have to double-check.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board?
We're just wondering, why again is it so expensive? Like, it seems like-
Like, it seems like painting the road would not be that expensive, is it like certain paint? Or like, do we have to get like a certain person to do it, maybe, because it has to...
Yeah, I believe it's the specifics of it and the reflective...
It is a special paint, because it's reflective.
Yeah, I...
I mean, I'll do it for three thousand.
I can ask them. It's just odd, five thousand dollars to paint your crosswalk.
Well, I'm guessing they probably have to have somebody a flagger that's...
That's true.
Like, they're gonna have to have a flagger to stop for traffic.
That's, that's what, yeah.
Lieutenant just said that, yeah.
Yeah, we were just wondering.
Yeah.
Labor.
Any other comments? Any public comments or questions? Come on up to the microphone. Now, we all know who you are, but you gotta say your name for the record.
John Maraz, Meadow Brook Lane. When was the last time these were done? Do we know?
It's been several years, I don't know the exact date.
Okay, so it's, it's not a yearly expense? So it's two, three, or four years, okay. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
We have no resolutions or ordinances. Subdivision in Land Development, number one, the zoning hearing board application for Forty Creek Road. The applicant is seeking an exception to current zoning. Do you want to, who wants to start with this? Do you, or do you, do you need, do you need, do you need something? Did you give it to us?
Uh, yeah, I closed my laptop and didn't bring my printed copy.
This is a residential property on Forty Creek Road. Uh, I think it's relatively small, a quarter acre or so. Uh, the property owner is involved in a business in Philadelphia that has to do with those little Christmas shops that, uh, that they put out, uh, like you see in small German towns, and it's done in the, in Center City, uh, November through December. Uh, he owns that business, or controls it in some way, and he needs a place to store, uh, the, um, I don't know...
The huts.
The huts, good.
The shed.
To store the huts. He'd like to store them at Forty Creek Road on a, when he's not using them. So, the question is whether, uh, this is a use that's permitted in the residential zone. Uh, certainly a non-conforming size lot. Um, I haven't seen the zoning application, uh, but I believe that he's asking for relief to store what are essentially commercial things on his property, uh, when not in use. Now, I, I have no information as to whether they'll be covered up, or whether they'll be, who talks over them, or whether they'll be stored, uh, you know, inside or outside. We have no information on that at that time.
The only thing he says, and, and I'm just gonna interrupt you, just for a second here. The only thing he says about site, or whether, whether it's gonna be covered or anything like that, he says, um, they propose, propose an eight-foot-high fence.
Did you say how many, how many you got, huts?
Not in the...
No.
Not in the application.
And then he says, generally, a hedge around the property to block the view, and to align the storage use with the rural character of the neighborhood as planned to be planted.
Have we heard from any neighbors? Has the, have the notices gone out? See, I have, I have no information on this.
Yes.
The notices have gone out?
Yes.
Have we heard from anybody?
Not to my knowledge.
How proximate are the adjacent residences to this parcel? I'm not familiar with this area.
Creek Road, it's right down here.
Yeah, I'm just...
So this is the, uh, the first house on the left, as you get down Creek Road. It's, uh, the old one. I think it was Dr. Sugiyura's, and they leveled the place, and then used it for storage.
It's not on the, not the one on the...
Not the one right here that you can see, but if you get down Creek Road, uh, right before you go through the first left bend, it's on the left side there.
Okay, so it's not, it's not...
It's not visible from the road. Where the driveway goes back.
There's a small building on it right now, that was some sort of Verizon building.
But it, the driveway goes back a good bit. Did he say on the, the application where he wants to put this? Is it visible from the road?
I believe, yes, it would be visible from the road, which is why they're proposing the hedges and the fence.
So there, there's a line here where he says, it's only sixteen thousand three hundred and eighty-seven square feet.
I have point three eight, uh, point thirty-eight of an acre on my Jesko views map.
And in that zoning, you need a hundred thousand square feet?
Hundred thousand's required of the zoning, yes. And it's residential, so they, they, they need a use variance, um, and maybe other grand varies, I haven't seen the application.
And how big's the shed?
It's not just one shed.
Maybe ten feet by ten feet, I'm guessing.
It's not just one shed, it's multiple sheds that he's gonna store. Have you ever been to a Christmas market?
Yeah.
So you know the huts that they have?
Sure.
He wants to store...
Those.
A, a, a park of them in, on this property. So it's not just storing one of them, he wants to store all of them. Be it, I don't know how many, because he doesn't say in his application.
That's what I'd wanna know, is he, he's talking about fencing it in. Is the entire property gonna be cluttered with these, or is it six of them, or?
See, that's the problem, we don't know. Maybe we should ask him to come in and, and, uh, so you're against it?
Yes. October tenth.
October tenth.
Monday.
So it's Monday.
So the question is, does the Board want to send representation?
Send Mr. Brennan out to argue against it, what to you?
This is all the information, like...
Yeah, I mean, that's a heavily wooded property now.
The question is whether, if this house is in, the neighbors will go crazy.
Right.
It's the only, the only real question, you have a room full of people screaming at you, how did this happen? On the other hand, it may be totally benign, but we don't know that.
Without knowing more, I couldn't support it.
And you're saying, you're saying you're gonna, it's heavily wooded, so we're, how is he...
He'd have to clear the, the property to put more than probably, I don't know, ten or twelve of these on there. And we don't know what, we don't know if it's an eyesore, if it's right up against the, the neighbors and their view shed.
It's about seventy-five feet from the property.
Yeah, it's like seventy-five feet from the house.
It says...
Thirty.
Oh, there's gonna be thirty of them. And he said, um... Someone has applied for a permit to cut the trees on his behalf.
That's right.
So he's looking to go eight foot on the fence also, instead of six. Which is our, our max now.
And that's just because it's an eyesore, is that why?
Probably, and protected. There was a house, it must have been non-conforming, that was there years ago.
It would have to have been.
Small doctor's office.
I thought that was the house, I thought that was one hundred country club.
I think it was Dr. Sugiyura's where he's looking at.
Yeah, that's one hundred country club, that's not forty.
That's Forty Creek.
Creek, I'm sorry, Creek Road, not one hun, it's one hundred Creek Road, not forty Creek Road.
Oh, you're right, that was the property that was given to the YMCA.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure that there was ever...
The only thing, the only comment that I wanted to make on this is, if they say that it's okay to do it on this property, and then my neighbor wants to do, he sells...
Suckersence.
My ne, my ne, yeah, my neighbor sells his property to this guy, and he wants to do it on my, on the property next to me.
That'd be a different case, I, you know...
It has been existing non-conforming law.
I mean, what I'm thinking is, maybe we can call him and say, uh, the Board is thinking about opposing it, if you give us more information, maybe they won't. Normally, uh, you know, opposition from supervisors is problematic, uh, in zoning hearings, especially if a variance is required, we're doing a hardship. But I don't know, there's no lawyer involved, so I, I, you know, I wouldn't even know who to call, or...
Do we, and we, we don't, we don't know what the permit to cut the trees, I mean, are they, you're cutting the, the property?
Dead ones.
We have an ordinance that requires certain replacements, so...
Dead trees, he's to remove, he's removed dead trees so far.
But the talk would be like, if you're moving more to put in...
When the about thirty garden sheds is kind of vague.
Yeah.
Where do you see that? I didn't even see that.
Ten by ten is what they are, thirty of them would be.
I think that's a...
I guess, I mean, just from being at that market.
Oh, there, there it is, okay.
They're open-faced normally, they're not shut in.
The neighbors would get notice of this, like, the neighbors would get notice, and they can...
Yeah, within a certain number of feet, you know, I don't know if there are any houses within, uh, that's five hundred feet.
Uh, there's, there's, there's a house within fifty foot of the property lot.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, so...
What? So, but wouldn't he be using them in December? I'm cur, I don't understand why he would be housing them in December from...
Late December, so, late December through...
Oh, okay, so they're gonna be there from December through November.
Every year.
Each, every, correct, forever.
And they cart them in, they cart them out, once a year, twice a year.
So he's gonna have big trucks going in there? I mean, are you guys concerned about that?
I don't like it on the small lot.
What?
I don't like it on the small lot.
Well, you may have to pay quite a bit to get them in and out if they are larger trucks or flatbeds.
So the question, do we want to oppose this?
Without knowing more, I would say yes, if they come back and say...
I don't think there's enough in this application for me to say now.
Yeah.
I think I can call, uh, Papa Kenneth, who's the solicitor, and tell him the Township has concerns, um, if, and we're ready to go ahead, but if they want to put it off for a month, and then come in at the November meeting, and explain what they want to do, and maybe answer your questions, you might, uh, be relieved. If we don't hear anything, then the Township will oppose it, and, uh, and, uh, that's that. So it's up to you, I'm not, you know, I'm plenty busy, I don't need to work.
I agree, I think we should do that. I think we should have Bill do that.
I think so, too.
So I'll call the Kenneth, see if he can get an extension, if he can't, then I'll show up and, uh, and oppose.
Okay. I mean, you understand our objections, right?
Oh, I do.
Oh, okay, 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 alright.
By the way, you can let him know that an eight-foot fence won't keep the deer out.
Yeah, I know, I was just thinking that, too.
Twelve, maybe.
Yeah, maybe.
The eight-foot fence isn't gonna keep the deer out, that's for sure. Okay. Do we need to make a motion on that?
Yeah, no? You don't, you don't need a motion for them to... They should authorize you to...
Under the code, I, I control a little affairs, but yeah, pass it, uh, take a motion.
I make a motion that Bill Brennan attend the zoning hearing board application for Forty Creek Road, um, in opposition.
Unless the, uh, unless the applicant agrees to postpone the hearing, and come into the Township with explanation of what he wishes to do.
Okay. You got that, Tina? Okay. I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
So for this one, is this all I'm doing, just reading?
Yep, I just wanted to make, make the upcoming meetings publicly available, or publicly announced.
Okay. Alright. Number two, the Polig Reeves Property. I just want to list the upcoming public meeting dates for plan review. Sedgley Farm subdivision submission, and East Philip Drive subdivision submission. Number one, the Historical Commission meeting on Monday, October seventeenth, at six P.M. Number two, the Planning Commission meeting Wednesday, October nineteenth, at seven thirty P.M. Number three, the Environmental Advisory Council, Tuesday, October twenty-fifth, at seven P.M. Number four, the Planning Commission meeting, if needed, Wednesday, November sixteenth, at seven thirty P.M. And number five, the Board of Supervisors meeting, tentative, November second, two thousand twenty-two, and/or December seventh, two thousand twenty-two. Any comments? Mr. Polig, I know you're here, do you have any comments?
No, just here to answer any questions, anything.
Okay. Any public comments or questions? Alright. Additional business, discussion on agenda items for the upcoming workshop meetings.
I thought we were doing our budget.
It is, that's just a placeholder on the agenda.
Oh, okay, okay. So we have, we have, we're going to be discussing, I have to get my calendar out here, because I know we changed the date.
Yeah, we have a budget, budget meeting on the thirteenth. We have another one, if needed, the next week, on the twentieth.
On the twentieth.
And we have, um, and that's, that's enough.
And, uh, we're actually, the budget meeting on the thirteenth is going to be at six P.M.
And we moved the other one to, why don't we kept the other one at seven?
And the other one, uh, on December...
October.
I'm sorry, October, gosh, I'm trying to hurry the year along. October twentieth, at seven P.M. So, um, that's it for this month's, um, workshop meetings. Does anyone else have any additional business? No? Okay. Announcements, I do have a few announcements here. The Schuylkill Township Police Association is holding their annual food drive from Saturday, October first, through Monday, October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Drop-offs can be made at the Township Building entrance between nine A.M. and four P.M., Monday through Friday. There will also be a drop-off day on Saturday, October fifteenth, from nine A.M. to twelve P.M. No donation is too small. More information will be available on the Township website closer to the date. Actually, I think they have it on there.
It's on the website.
Is it on the website already? Okay. On Saturday, October eighth, two thousand twenty-two, the Fire Company Auxiliary is holding their lasagna sale. Order yours online at the Valley Forge Volunteer Fire Company website. On Monday, October tenth, at six thirty P.M., the Valley Forge Volunteer Fire Company will hold their annual open house. Visit the Fire Company's website or the Facebook page for details. On Thursday, October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, the Board of Supervisors will hold a special budget meeting, which we just discussed, to review the proposed two thousand twenty-three Township budget. The meeting will be held in person at six P.M. in the Township Meeting Room located at eleven, one-eleven Valley Forge Road in Phoenixville. On Thursday, October twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, the Schuylkill Township Police Association will hold their second Brew With The Blue event. It will be held at My Favorite Muffin, located at eleven-thirty Valley Forge Road. Please enjoy a muffin and a cup of coffee with the Schuylkill Township Police Association. Information will be available on the Township website closer to the date.
I think it is on the website, too, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. On Sunday, October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, the Chester County Solid Waste Authority is holding a Used Bicycle and Sewing Machine Drive from twelve P.M. to three P.M. at the West Goshen Municipal Complex. Adults and kids' bikes and sewing machines will be collected and sent to those in need in developing countries around the world. Information on the drive can be found on our website. The Schuylkill Township Police Association will be hosting a Code Drive for local families in need from Tuesday, November first, two thousand twenty-two, to Tuesday, January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Please see the Township website closer to the event for more details. From Tuesday, November first, to Wednesday, November thirtieth, the Schuylkill Township Police will also be running another drive for the local homeless shelter in downtown Phoenixville. A list of needed items will be available on the Police Association's Facebook page. On November fifth, from seven to eleven, the Valley Forge Volunteer Fire Company will hold their pancake breakfast. And on November fifth, from, I'm sorry, November nineteenth, from ten to one, the Valley Forge Volunteer Fire Company will hold their soup sale. Any, oh, I'm sorry, Rick, ahead.
Nine A.M. for pre-orders, ten A.M. for stop and shop, and they'll probably be out of there by noon.
Okay. Thank you, Rick. Alright, any other announcements? Does anyone have any other announcements they want to make? That's really good, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna announce that, I mentioned this at our last meeting, I believe. Phoenixville bed races are coming up on November fifth. Um, this is also to benefit Ant Heart, which is one of the shelters, um, in Phoenixville, as well as Good Samaritan Shelter. Uh, if you've not been to a bed race, they are, they are ridiculously fun. Uh, they build beds to emphasize the fact that the funds that are being raised are going to be, um, providing shelter, uh, to people who have none. Um, it's from eleven A.M. to two P.M. It benefits not only people in the borough, but also the surrounding communities, which is where most of our guests come from. So if you have any questions about that, let me know. It's, it's a fun event.
What's your theme?
Peter Urschuler is the flag waver, you know, he, it's, it's quite amusing. Our theme this year will be, you'll have to show up. My team... My team, uh, was not the fastest. We raised the most funds last year, so we were, I would be happy to be beat for that, so.
Oh, gosh, that's funny. Okay. Our next, uh, business meeting will be November 2nd, 2022. Does anyone have any public comment? Come on up, even though we know who you are, we do need you to have, state your name for the record.
Uh, Suzanne Rocky. Um, I attended the EAC, um, last week and I was told, because they were addressing, uh, deer management. And I was told that that topic needs to be addressed at the board meeting and that's where I have to come, so that's why I'm here. It was mentioned that, the police mentioned that there have been not that many accidents and stuff, so there's no need for deer management. But I beg to differ because my property is just overrun with deer. And they're so destructive. They eat all my vegetation. We've planted plants that are supposed to be, um, deer-resistant, like, uh, laurels and et cetera, and they eat all that. And they eat my roses and my geraniums and it gets to be expensive 'cause we really love to have a garden. Parsley, tomatoes, everything. It's gone. And I, I fence it in and they knock it down because they're like herds. And that, I have ten at a time going across and it's from morning to night. It's not that they're nocturnal. It's, it's all day long. And so, I just thought we need, might wanna readdress deer management.
Question for you. Did you hear at the EAC meeting that the police said there wasn't an increase in deer accidents?
I did hear that.
So, I remember looking at the, uh-
I think there, I think what he said was there was no significant increase.
The first half of the year, it looked like there was.
We do have numerous deer vehicle collisions. But it's about the same as it has been historically. It's not a spike.
So, from five years ago to this year, and they, they go up and down, they spike and, um, does seem like there's a lot more this year in my neighborhood and all along Valley Park.
Okay, 'cause I thought-
But I haven't, haven't been up your way for a while, so I didn't know if it was just in our area or if it's everywhere.
There's a lot. And they just kind of go across to the other side. I, I mean, we don't have a heavily traveled road, so it's not that there's injury accidents and stuff. But there's a lot of vegetative damage.
Suzanne, how much acreage do you have?
Sorry?
How much acreage do you have?
Three point two acres. And the, and it's pretty much what everybody has around me. I think there's six acres on the one side and it's long and, and the next person has three acres and-
And can I ask you, you know that you can have deer hunters come onto your property. You can do that yourself if you choose to.
Um, see, I didn't know that. I know that the people behind me do during archery season. And so, I don't know how you manage deer 'cause I don't really, I'm not comfortable with the hunters being there, uh, next to my property, but it's, it's an issue. There, there's just so many. And they seem to be very thin. They're not big deer anymore. They're, it's like they need food, but, and they're getting it at my house. I just wanted to ask if you could readdress what you could do for that.
Have we ever provided, so I, I suppose the deer management that would be done would be done on township-owned property? Because we're not gonna be going on to private property to cull deer.
That would really address the issues that you're facing.
Years ago, uh, one of the supervisors did put together a deer management committee, going back 25 years ago.
Well, he was the only member of the committee.
And the deer, and the deer population, it was significantly higher.
Valley Forge wasn't culling the herd back then, so the waves of deer were coming in. Um, since then, they did start culling and I think the township took the pressure, that took a lot of pressure off the township. Uh, but, yeah, I think, uh, back then, he had made a lot of calls to different property owners to see if they were interested and then put the two together. But, uh, and now I, I don't think there's a, a group working on any of the township properties for years now.
So, I don't know, um, if you can work in cooperation with, uh, Valley Forge Park 'cause I'm sure there's a lot there too.
They've just about annihilated their herd.
They did?
Yeah. Um, they, they did nighttime bait and cull for years. I don't know what they're doing now, but I know they took out the majority of the deer from the park.
Well, so maybe we can talk to them how, how to manage this, but there's a lot. We have a lot of deer on our property and in, in the area, so I just, again, I just wanted you to readdress that or look into it.
Well, it's unfortunate that what normally happens is disease will come through after they overpopulate to a certain size. You'll see them get skinny and-
Right.
Whether it's, uh, chronic wasting disease or there's a few different bugs that they can get and that can wipe out a huge chunk of the herd. Same thing happens with foxes.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, 'cause there's, the only predator is, you know, would be humans now.
Right.
Whether it's through vehicles or hunting for disease, so.
So, well, that was what I wanted to address. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.